On behalf of the Fish and Wildlife Department, we're Vermont Fish and Wildlife Board. Welcome. Thank you all for coming out. I want to call it maybe our second summer evening that we've had. We're finally getting the summer weather and now we can betweed how hot and warm it is and muggy. A little while ago, we'd say, gosh, it's just too cold. But for those of you who I haven't had the pleasure to meet before, my name is Mark Scott. I'm the Director of Wildlife for the Fish and Wildlife Department. Our mission here tonight is primarily to hear from you. Every comment you give us or question, we're going to jot it down. We're going to spend some time collating all of that. I'd like to share it with all of you individually, all the comments we hear tonight. If you leave us your email address, but if you don't want to do that, that's okay. We'll have it all up on our department website for you to see all the comments. Every comment since we started this process back in April, when the Fish and Wildlife Board changed our fur bear management rule. And basically, the topic was creating best management practices for legal regulated trapping in the state of Vermont and to make changes in regulations on people that hunt coyotes with the aid of dogs. So the department staff worked with many of you in this room, different constituents, in the whole past year, have been working to create rules that make both of those activities more safe and more humane, as we were asked to do by Vermont Legislature to do that. I can't thank you all enough for spending the time here tonight to come, because we need to hear from each and every one of you. The format that we have set for tonight is we'll have a little overview from our staff. Kim Royer, who was our fur bear project leader for decades here in the state of Vermont. She graciously accepted to come back and help us through this process. She retired to do that. And along with Major Sean Fowler, the Assistant Director of Law Enforcement, we'll chat a little bit about the regulations on hunting coyotes with the aid of dogs. So those two people are going to try to set the stage. And then we have a lot of department staff here. I'm going to ask your cooperation and help to get into some breakout groups, so that each and every one of you will have a chance to be heard tonight by us and recorded. And then we'll present all that information to the Fish and Wildlife Board. Speaking of the Board, that's the primary regulatory body in the state of Vermont that deals with most of the hunting, fishing, and trapping regulations that Legislature gives it authority to do. I know I've seen some Board members here firsthand, so if I can kind of quickly go all around the room. We'll start over here. Brian, I'll put you on the spot to go first, but state who you are and then what county you live in.
I'm Brian Bailey. I'm living very down. What do you watch?
I'm Allison Preacher from Richmond, Vermont, representing Chittany County.
I'm Paul Well from Irisburg, Orleans County.
I'm Adamson, Addison County.
Mike Colson, Vermont, representing Essendon County.
Mike Van Proff, Orange County.
Brad Farland, Harrodick, representing Calhoun County.
Great. Well, thank you. I hope to spend... Going through the introductions of our other department staff, they're going to be at the breakout tables, working with you, and you'll get to meet some of those folks here tonight. Again, this meeting principally is we want to hear from you. We're going to try to set the stage here in the next 20 minutes or so, and then we're going to need your help and cooperation to get into some breakout groups. We kind of had a little curveball thrown at us here in the late innings of this game, where we had a different room set up, but we are. We are. The tables are out back in the hallway, and depending on how we can manage that, we'll probably have a few folks in here working with department staff. So again, on behalf of the Fish and Wildlife Board in the department, I can't thank you enough for giving up your evening to come here tonight. This is important. So I'm going to turn it over to Kim Royer. It's Kim, you want to walk us through on the fur bear management changes.
Sure. Thank you, Mark. So I'm going to walk through the fur bear best management practices, proposed regulations, and then Major Fowler will take over, and he will walk through the hunting coyote with hounds regulations. So we're talking about best management practices for trapping. We are actually the only state in the nation, as far as I know, that has tried to take what were recommendations and convert them to regulations. So there was no template for us to follow. So this has taken us quite a while. We've actually been working on this for almost a year. I think we started in July of last year. And we began with the 2022 Legislature. They passed Act 159. They directed the department and the Board to come up with recommendations for best management practices for trapping that would improve specifically animal welfare and selectivity. And they went on to say, "The BMPs shall be based on investigation and research conducted by scientists and experts at the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and shall use the best management practices for trapping in the United States issued by the Association of Fish and Wildlife Agencies as the minimum standards." And you'll see the picture on the board up there is the picture of this monograph. This is a prestigious Journal of Wildlife Management monograph that actually presents an overview of the BMP research project that's gone on for the last 25 years, national research project. So let me just talk a little bit about one slide about what are best management practices for those of you who don't know. And in this case, they were, there's a national research effort, like I said, started in 1997, I believe. And basically, there have been 2,000 pairs of trappers and trapper technicians out on the landscape across 41 states testing traps. Vermont actually participated in this effort, maybe eight, 10 years, something like that. And those technicians would send back the data to statisticians, who would then analyze the data to ensure that there was, the bias was eliminated. The protocols for the data and the protocols for the whole study were actually set up by the International Organization for Standardization. And they resulted in best management practices for trapping. And some of you may have seen the booklets that are available that help to show you what types of traps and trapping systems you might use for different species. The goal behind this effort was animal welfare, improving animal welfare, improving selectivity, efficiency, practicability, and safety. And based on the international standards, which, like I said, is the premier standardization setting group in the world, it's, they basically, 59% of the traps pass and 41% failed. So we used the research and the information that we got from the Association of Fish and Wildlife Agencies as closely as we could to try to develop these best management practices. Actually, 9,000 animals were sent to veterinarians for necropsy, and that's how they determined whether or not these traps passed or failed by the injury rates. So the Legislature actually outlined seven directives, and we tried as closely as we could to stick to those directives. And I will refer back to these as we go through the regulations, just so you can see which regulations actually address which directives. But I'll go through these one at a time right now. So they directed us to propose trapping devices that are designed to minimize injury to a captured animal. They established, they directed us to establish criteria for adjusting or maintaining trapping devices so that they operate correctly and humanely. They required that we recommend trapping techniques, including appropriate size and type of traps for target animals, use of lures or other attractants, trap safety, methods to avoid non-target animals. They recommended requirements for the location of traps at a safe distance from public trails, Class 4 roads, playgrounds, parks, and other public locations where persons may reasonably be expected to recreate. They directed us to develop criteria for when and how live captured animals should be released or dispatched. They directed us to revise the trapper education materials, which I think the Association of Fish and Wildlife Agencies is in the process of doing. And we already have information about best management practices in our current trapper education classes. And then they directed us to estimate what it would cost to fund replacement traps. And we did this estimate. We submitted it in our report to the Legislature in January, but as yet, I don't believe there's any funding that's been tagged for this. So what are the recommendations? I'm going to go through these one by one, and you'll see that there are, there's the text that's black, and then you'll see highlighted portions in yellow. And what this is, the Board passed the text in black last April. And then the department has subsequently made some recommendations that I've put up there in yellow. When you go to your breakout groups, there'll actually be materials at the table that will allow you to review these again, because it's very dense. There's a lot of information here. And I'm actually going to read through it in case you can't really see it that well. But again, don't feel like you have to memorize any of this. Those materials will be at your breakout tables, and you'll be able to look at them again. So basically, this is trying to address legislative charges one, two, and three. So again, remember, one is designed to minimize injury to captured, designed to minimize injuries to captured animals. Directed two is to establish criteria for adjusting or maintaining trapping devices so that they operate correctly and humanely. And three is to recommend trapping techniques, including appropriate size and type of traps for target animals, trap safety, and methods to avoid non-target animals. So these one, two, three, four, five bullets. The first one is that trapping systems should have base plates that feature a center chain mount with a swivel with free moving chain, and at least, and we changed the, we're recommending, I shouldn't say we changed it, because this is just a recommendation, that the Board consider changing that from one swivel to two. Additional swivels that allow mobility for captured animals. That foothold traps on land must be anchored with a maximum of 18-inch chain. Extra swivels and/or shock springs can be added to the chaining system. Foot foothold traps on land must be triggered by down, that all traps that are triggered by downward pressure must be adjustable for pan tension. Foot foothold traps on land must be padded or offset and laminated with a minimum jaw thickness of no more than 5/16 of an inch or fully encapsulating the foot. Foot foothold traps on land must have a jaw spread of no more than six and, actually, I need my glasses to see the little, six and a quarter inches measured inside the widest expanse of the jaws. The Board in the last vote actually included legalizing drags, and the department is recommending that maybe that be taken out until drags have been tested through the BMP research effort. Issue two, body gripping traps. And this one is addressing Legislative Charge Three again, which is to recommend trapping techniques that include appropriate size and type of trap for target animals, trap safety, and methods to avoid non-target animals. So again, 4.6, "A person shall not set a body gripping trap with a jaw spread opening greater than 60 square inches measured inside the widest expanse of the jaws unless the trap is five feet or more above the ground or in the water." The Board voted, "No meat-based baited body gripping trap shall be set on the ground unless placed within an anchored enclosure with an opening no greater than 60 square inches and with a trap trigger that is recessed at least 12 inches from all openings." The department is recommending, "Take out the meat-based and say, 'No body gripping trap shall be set on the ground unless placed within an anchored enclosure.'" Blah, blah, blah. 4.8, "The Board voted, 'Meat-based body gripping traps with a jaw spread up to and including 60 square inches can be used on land if the trap is placed at least five feet above the ground.'" Again, we are recommending that body gripping traps with a jaw spread up to and including 60 square inches can be used on the land if the trap is placed at least five feet above the ground. The changes by removing meat-based basically means that all body gripping traps have to either be five feet off the ground, in the water, or in an enclosure that's anchored. Issue three, baits and lures. This again addresses Legislative Charge Three, which directed the department to address the use of lures and other attractants. And this is, this is to minimize the capture of non-target species, particularly avian species. 4.9, "All meat-based bait shall be covered at the time that trap is set. Covering shall include, but are not limited to brush, branches, leaves, soil, snow, water, or enclosures constructed of wood, metal, wire, plastic, or natural materials." And issue four, trails and public highway offsets. So the Board actually voted to set, to require that foothold traps on or within 25 feet of a traveled portion of a public highway or trail must be in the water or five feet above the ground. And the department is recommending, mostly for simplicity's sake, that both foothold and connoisseur traps and offsets should be 50 feet. So it reads, the recommended reading right now is, "No body gripping traps on or foothold traps shall be set on or within 50 feet of the traveled portion of a town trail, public trail, or highway unless set in the water. This setback requirement shall not apply to public trails and Class 4 highways located in wildlife management areas." And the reason for that is wildlife management areas have been, many of them have been purchased with dollars from hunters and trappers and are there for wildlife-based recreation, including hunting and trapping. The definitions, and it's important to understand the definitions as they apply to this particular proposed regulation. So public highway for the purposes of this rule means roads, including Class 4 roads, shown on the highway maps of the respective towns made by the Agency of Transportation, but does not include foot trails or public roads. Public trail for the purposes of this rule means a pedestrian footpath on Vermont state-owned public land open to the public and designated and mapped by the managing agency or department. Again, not including wildlife management areas. And then the department's recommending that we add town trail, which shall mean a public right-of-way as defined in 19VSA 301-8, shown on the highway maps of the respective towns made by the Agency of Transportation. So it's hard to see this, but this is the town of Bridgewater. Basically, all the lines on that map would require a 50-foot offset. Issue number five, humane dispatch. And this covers, let's see, I guess, let me just see here, which one is it? The directive number, number five. Yep. So develop criteria for when and how live captured animals should be released or dispatched. So the Board voted at the last, in the April meeting, to include the following language. Dispatch of trapped animals. Upon discovery, a trapper shall immediately dispatch a live trapped fur bearer with a muzzleloader, gun, crossbow, or bow and arrow. This provision may be amended upon receipt of the Association of Fish and Wildlife Agencies' recommendations regarding humane dispatch. This subsection shall not be interpreted to prevent a trapper from releasing an unharmed captured animal or a domestic pet. And the reason why they put in the part about the Association of Fish and Wildlife Agencies is there's actually a working group that's working on dispatch guidelines right now, but they haven't quite completed those. And once they send those to us, we might revisit this again. So that's basically all of it in a nutshell. If you have, if you want more information, you can go on our website to the top web address, and you'll see the report that we submitted to the Legislature, which is a previous iteration of all of this, so it's not the same language as what I just went through with you tonight. But also other materials, and if you want to learn more about best management practices, Bryant White and Nathan Roberts, for those of you who weren't there, gave a presentation at the November public meeting, and that is on our website on a YouTube video, and it goes into way more depth than I went into tonight on what best management practices are and what went into creating them. So I will pass it over to the major. Thank you, everybody.
Welcome, everybody. So the other reason we are here is to talk about the practice of pursuing coyotes with the aid of hounds. So Legislative Act 165, which came out of the 2022 legislative session, put a moratorium on the practice of pursuing coyotes with aid of hounds with a couple of pretty stringent exceptions for landowner and damage-type situations. Moratorium went into effect on July 1st of 2022, and essentially, there was no coyote hounding in the state of Vermont until such time as the Fish and Wildlife Board and the Department of Fish and Wildlife could come up with regulations to govern the practice. Okay? The Legislature also put more restrictions on it. The Legislature basically said they don't want any more than 100 permits issued in a given year, and only 10% of those permits can be issued to nonresidents, and that is based on the number of resident permits from the previous year. They also put in their land, or for training season for nonresidents, and we'll get into the training seasons and the hunting seasons in a little bit. The training season for nonresidents is tied directly to the home state of that houndsman. So if they don't have a open training season in their home state, they can't come to the state of Vermont and train their dogs here. And then the other part is they, there's more restrictions for this practice when it comes to landowners. So a coyote hounder cannot go on posted property unless they have written permission from the landowner where they are running their hounds. And then above and beyond that, if the property is unposted and the property owner does not want hounds on their property, and then they inform law enforcement, and then law enforcement informs the hound hunter or a member of their hunting party, then that hound hunter cannot go back to that piece of property. And if they do, there's penalties, which we'll get into in a little bit. So when the department looked at it before they brought stuff to the Board, basically what we did was we took the bear hound rule and adopted much of it for the pursuit of coyotes with the aid of hounds. So a lot of the stuff is going to be very, very similar. There's some notable exceptions. When we get to them, I'll kind of point them out. So the other parts of this that the Legislature mandated is they, there needed to be a limit on the pack size, so the number of dogs that can be on a hunt for coyotes. There was a prohibition on the substitution of dogs, so no relaying, which is already in the bear rule, so if folks did that, they should be used to that already. Then there was a definition of control that would minimize the likelihood that dogs will enter land posted against hunting or where the pursuit of coyotes with dogs is not authorized. Goes back to what I talked to you a few minutes ago, or a second ago, about the landowner stuff. There is also a requirement for all coyotes that are killed during the pursuit with hounds, they have to be reported to the Fish and Wildlife Department. They also could, said that the Board should consider seasonal restrictions and dating. So as a direct result of that legislative act, there was two new laws that came into effect in the state of Vermont in 2022. This is one of them. It is Title 10 VSA 5008, and it is titled, you know, Hunting Coyotes with the Aid of Dogs. This is where it lays out and gives the Commissioner permission to have the permits. It lays out the number of permits, which is 100 permits total annually. It lays out that only 10% of those permits can go to nonresidents based on the total number of permits from the previous year. It also lays out the training season for nonresidents is tied to the home state. And then it lays out the fee structure, and basically, for a resident, it is $50. For a nonresident, it is a $10 application fee. And then if they are granted a permit, it is $200 to obtain that permit. The other law that came out is Title 10 VSA 5009, and that is the Pursuing Coyotes with the Aid of Dog, and that is the landowner permission. And that is the actual statutory language of what I just described to you just a few seconds ago about, if it's posted, written permission is required ahead of time. If it is not posted and the landowner doesn't want the hunter there, they have to notify law enforcement. Law enforcement has to notify the houndsman or someone in their party, and then they cannot go back. It also lays out the penalties for this in this state statute. Okay? If you look down at C, the first offense of a person who violates this, it shall be considered a minor fish and wildlife violation, which would result in five-point violation. There has not been any fine associated with it yet. That'll come later. And then number two, it basically lays out that any subsequent offenses would be a 10-point So as far as the legislative manages, the limit of dogs, so there's terminology in there, and it is department-registered dogs. And basically, what that means is, is when the department issues a bear, or a coyote hound permit to a hunter, it will come with brass tags that are fixed to the dog's collars with numbers on them, and that is what would constitute a registered dog with the department. A pack of dogs, so if a hunter is out, they are only allowed four dogs to pursue coyotes, which is down from bears, the bear, it is six, so it is, it is more restrictive than that. The other part of it was legal method of take, which falls in line with virtually every other piece of hunting that we do in the state of Vermont. Okay? So the legal means of taking coyotes with the aid of dogs include the utilization of a muzzleloader, gun, bow and arrow, or crossbow. Basically lays out that if someone chooses to use archery equipment, whether that's a compound bow, longbow, whatever, or a crossbow, they have to have archery ed. That's being folded into all new regulations, just to have everything kind of standardized. And then the same thing with that last bullet point down there. It discusses the minimum standard for a broadhead, which is 7/8 of an inch with two sharp cutting edges, which is standard in many of our regulations. Definition of control. So I will read this one to you verbatim. "The transportation, loading, or unloading of dogs from a vehicle and the handling, catching, restraining, releasing dogs to pursue coyote. GPS collars with track log and training slash control functions or separate GPS and training collars, training control collars shall be required to locate and track dogs at all times when in pursuit of coyotes. At no time shall a dog be in pursuit of coyotes without a GPS track log being maintained by the permit holder." So essentially, what this means is, if they are out there pursuing coyotes with hounds, they have to have a collar that tracks and a training collar that, get down below it. Training and control collars is any in a family of collars that delivers electrical stimulation of varying intensities and duration to the neck of a dog via a radio-controlled electronic device incorporated into the collar. So they will have to have both of those or one collar that has both of those functions. So it has to be a tracking collar and it has to be a control collar. Required reporting. So every coyote that is taken with the aid of dog, the permit holder is going to be required to report all of those within 48 hours of the close of the season in a manner that has been required by the Commissioner, and the Commissioner has yet to establish that. But that'll get done later on in this process. And then at the very bottom, it basically says, "No coyote carcass will be taken out of the state of Vermont unless it has been reported in the manner directed by the Commissioner." Seasons and shooting hours. So the coyote hound training season for Vermont residents and nonresident permit holders is June 1st through September 15th. Bearing in mind, for nonresidents, they have to have a training season open in their home state to come here to train. June 1st to September 15th falls in line with virtually every other dog hunting and training season that we have. I already talked about the nonresidents. So the coyote hunting season will be December 15th through March 31st for those pursuing with hounds. The regular hunting season isn't affected by this. It's just the ones that are pursuing coyotes with the aid of hounds. December 15th through March 31st. Legal hunting hours, most other things are the same, one half hour before sunrise until one half hour after sunset. And that it is in a nutshell for the coyote hounding part. Mark?
Jim, Sean, thank you very much for the thorough presentation and the due all that. Now we're at the most important part of the meeting, that's the key area for you. Yeah, are you around now?
Right here.
Okay. What's the gate plan for roughly, how many tables per table?
We have about 66 that I call like, so we'd like to break up into nine groups. We have six tables outside, and we'll break up in here. We'll have three groups, just kind of sit in rows, and we'll go with the paperwork and take on. So I'm kind of just asking people to step outside. We'll have seven tables sent to you. Now we're at the most important part of the meeting, that's the beginning of our review. Yeah, are you around now?
Right here.
Okay. What's the game plan for roughly, how many tables per table?
We have about 66, that I call it, so we'd like to break up into nine groups. We have six tables outside, and we'll break up in here, we'll have three groups, just kind of sit in rows, and we'll go with the paperwork and take on. So I'm kind of just asking people if they want to step outside, we'll have a set table, set each table, most people have got it set up. I don't know if there's, if we go to the front and wants to stay here in each section, just so it breaks up a little easier, just by the side, like that's eight or nine groups per table.
Paperwork, and this for you, questions that are really important, and we get input on these right now that are here. After we go through that facilitative process with staff, people are welcome to come on back. We'll talk about where we're going to go from here at the next step, the next board meeting, Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules, how we're going to do that, and also, if it's not too late, we'll be happy to entertain any other comments or people that are interested in talking. So why don't you, we appreciate your cooperation, and you may not have mentioned it, here's the bathroom.
Okay, if we can have everybody who wants to take a seat, if you could, we'd like to wrap this up and then also entertain time if anybody wants to share any other comments or questions for the board and the department. So you got the slide up here, July 19th, the Fish and Wildlife Board will be doing a second vote on the rules that you heard tonight on both of those subjects, all within the rule of furbear management. Then the department will be pulling together the second vote, trying to schedule a meeting ahead of time with the Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules. That's made up of both the House and the Senate. Their main guidelines are to look at the rule and to make sure that it follows the intent of the legislature and the naval authority, that the board had the authority to create the rules that it did to do that. They usually get a letter from the chair, I still refer to it as the Fish and Wildlife Committee, I know they've changed their name, but, and also the Senate Natural Resources Chair, too, usually weighs in on every rule that's done, just the rule, those committees of jurisdiction, our rules on fish and wildlife, make sure that, that it's kosher to the process that's being done. So depending on what LCAR does, we hope for positive reaction, but from it, I think we've done a good, thorough, fair process, and this, this worked with the board. Then we'll move back to the board and ask them for a third vote. The whole goal is to have this become effective by January 1, 2024, to be the law. We will be putting a placeholder in the law book on both of these activities to alert hunters and trappers to go to our website for the current regulations that they need to abide by in 2024. I can't thank you all enough. Thank the board for coming here and volunteering your time and serving on the board. I was pleasantly happy, thrilled to see the participation. I got to get around every group. I thought everybody was respectful. I can't thank the department staff for doing due diligence of recording all the comments and, and being patient as, as people talked and made sure that they recorded in, in their verbiage of what they had to say to do that. I want to encourage all of you, if you have any more comments at all, please send them in with the open public comment period is to the end of this month, June 30th. I can give you an email address, but I think the easiest way, just go to the department website, and you'll see right on our homepage, you can click on Public Comments for this, and you can submit an email to the department. Even if you came here tonight, gave us your comments, please feel free to go back in and share any, any more comments, or you want to emphasize a point, you want to add more information that would be helpful for the board to do this, we will collate every comment, all the questions we've received last night, tonight, and tomorrow night, we're going to be doing a virtual public hearing. We will do a responsive summary for all those and provide it to the board. It will also be on our website. Someone asked me in one of the work groups, if they can think about these questions more, will they be on the website? Yes, they will. I can't know if they're on the website right now, but I'll make sure by tomorrow, we get them up there with the presentation that Kim Royer did and Major Sean Fowler, so you can see that again. We'll be showing that same tape presentation that you saw here tonight tomorrow night, and then we're going to allow people to comment again on these same questions. Depending on the number of people that, that connect with us tomorrow night, we'll try to figure out how, how much time to limit people to comment. So on behalf of the department and all the staff, hats off to the staff for doing a great job here tonight, and the board for being here, I can't thank you enough, and particularly the people that came here tonight, whether you enjoy hunting, trapping, or just wildlife in the state of Vermont, this is important. We take every comment and your questions seriously, so thank you. That closes our formal part of the groups, but we are also willing to take and record any other comments that somebody wants to share with the group. I'll ask you to address your statements or comments to me, and to keep it within two minutes or so, just to be respectful of people's time. But, and otherwise, if, if you want to hit the road and go home, I guess there's still a little daylight, thank you for coming here tonight, and safe travels. So if anybody's got a comment or statement that they'd like to make, now's the time. And you might, I would just encourage you to maybe come down partway, halfway down the hall and project your voice so people can hear you. So I'll go, go ahead in the back, yep.
I guess there's a single question. Is this, do I just talk to you and not receive the response back? I have a question, will you answer tonight, I do, or Kim Royer?
We're not going to answer questions tonight, through the time, the process, but we want the question so we can record it, and everybody here will see our response to your question. Not only the people that are here tonight, those who went to the meeting last night, those who go on our website, through this whole process, we know that attend virtually. So if you have a question, please give it, we've got the light that recorded your comments now. We've got staff writing them down, too, in case you have a malfunction.
So my, my question was, you know, if Fish and Wildlife ever considered requiring what APWA recommends, you use APWA as like the gold model, right? And APWA has the BMPs specific for each species, they have like, so the model has 14 different BMPs. The BMPs that have shared tonight are insufficient, because they don't protect animal species. So that was my question. If you really want to follow APWA's BMP process and the wildlife and wildlife route, then you should be requiring BMPs, you know, specific for each species. APWA's website, they have that listed, you know, all the different furbear species, BMPs for each species, but it seems to be like BMPs have been kind of not thoroughly explained all the nuances and the facts these legislators and the public, you know, six of the four inch level trap might be okay, or higher level trap might be okay, for grey fox, or stump, or, you know, a smaller, so why these things are very nuanced, and so I guess I want to answer that. Also, one last thing, APWA advises against meeting BMPs regulations for this very reason. APWA said that they're too complex to turn into regulations, you know, if they're archery or so. So it seems like in response to the bill of ban of medical traps, this was offered as a legitimate, the trap was just made for me, and we use, or you use APWA's BMPs, but that would rarely explain all the nuances. I think it's really important for folks want to understand better, go on our website, there's BMPs for each species, and what's recommended by Fish and Wildlife, they do nothing to protect animal, especially, you know.
Okay. So I gathered a couple of questions there and some comments, so I know we've got all that, and I, I have three minutes, I should ask everybody who'd like to speak, if you would just state who you are and your residence, your town residence.
I'm running out of time, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Royer. Okay. Anybody else want to make a statement or comment? George, I'll move around.
Gordon Rock, there. The square position on the 50-foot rule for the roadways, last trail goes across the property, five, is that 50-foot rule still to be maintained on that property? That's one of my questions. My comment is, for the 100 permits that are going to be given out, I believe you should have a 100 license or a 100 license in the other state. Vermont's, to apply for the 100 permits, other words, we'd be going on, we're just not, first.
Thank you, George. Make sure we clarify upon the both of those questions. Yes, great, thanks.
I'm feeling it with that.
Quick stand up, can you just say where you're from, through the room?
I'll tell you what, George said, I could foresee going forward, if more than 100 people apply for the permits, it should be done with a lottery system like Campbell, is it, everybody, you know, it shouldn't be first come, first served, it should be done with a lottery, more than 100.
Thank you. Sorry, I appreciate that. Come over this slide, far back, go ahead. Yep, you got it, last, you're the one.
My name is Jerry, my name is Rockford, I'm from Vermont, and I want to speak to the BMPs also. The legislative mandate in Act 159 directed the department to reduce animal suffering by introducing BMPs, but yet there's no change to the use of the Conover 220 for fish and trapping. I've provided a research paper done by researchers first through to Canada at the BMP testing laboratory that proves, and I quote, although, although the Conover 220 trap is often recommended as an alternative to the steel metal trap, it is unlikely that it has the potential to mainly kill fisher. So I want to know why it is then included in the fisher BMP still. I've asked three men for the project leader of the department, I haven't gotten an answer, I asked Stanley Salisbury, I haven't gotten an answer. I would really like to know why a trap that has not passed BMP testing at the research facility is being allowed to be used.
Do you have a copy of the scientific paper?
I have.
Enter evidence, okay, okay. Can't find it, you know where to find it. Okay, thank you, Ron. Okay, thanks. Anybody in this middle section, come on, see anything here tonight? One over the left, back to the right, go ahead, sir.
Jerry Kamiko, Roxbury. I want to speak on behalf of adopting best management practices, either the Vermont traffic regulations, I'm a trapper, been trapping in the 1950s, and a member of Vermont Traffic Association that was involved in the BTA, if we just discuss how best to improve better practices to address the legitimate concerns of safety involving trapped animals. BTA spent many months discussing and developing best management practices, also known BMPs, which we presented to the department. Tonight you will hear, you will receive comments from the recreational lobbyists from several anti-hunting and anti-trapping groups about appropriate trapping, and other arguments that trapping should not be allowed. Look, this hearing should only be about the methods, about the merits of adopting these BMPs. Other arguments include that these regulations are unenforceable. This is a species document of test, that's responsible people act responsible when these GMPs are adopted to trap, as I know, for following regulations. BMP, the BTA does not condone irresponsible trapping. Most of the anti-trap, anti-trapping arguments are describing one of them. This one happened, this incident happened, we go back to that incident, that dog unfortunately was caught in a 220 last year. As I mentioned, BTA does not condone irresponsible trapping and works with law enforcement to, to have these people hunted. I've never heard any of these anti, anti groups disassociate themselves from the airport terrorists in their group. I would also like to speak in favor of continuing to hunt coyotes and not hunting coyotes and hounds, thus supporting Massachusetts with limited traffic, but the opportunities exist, there are numerous reasons that hounds of coyotes have to be. Because when males are not hunted, they have lost their fear. Hounding reinforces that fear of land and wildlife, and this fear will likely reduce in the numbers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's happening, so if you're, if you're, if you want to do that.
All right. Can I have a copy of that? You want that tonight? We have a picture of.
Yes.
We have our, do you want to take this one? We'll make sure that it's in. Sure, yeah, please, Mike, just put your down. Thanks. Anybody else have heard from a comment or question, go ahead, yes, thank you.
Oh, yeah, so I'm Karen McKenzie, I live in the current Vermont. And one of, I mean, so we're here to talk about BMPs tonight, and I, she was a little bit of a side issue has to do with public safety. Setbacks are one aspect of public safety. Another aspect is signage for trapping areas. I think it's really important that everybody think about this, consider it, I think it should be a requirement. My dog Clara was killed in December of last year by a body gripping trap. She died in my house, a half mile from my house, and I carried her back to my car and took her home, the game work would take her next morning, and got the trap off of her neck. If there had been signage at the foot of that, the top of that road, she would not have been killed that way. I think the onus, the responsibility is on you, trappers, and the Fish and Wildlife Department to make this a requirement. I don't see any reason why it's not a requirement. Are you afraid that your traps will be sabotaged? Are you, you don't like the idea of somebody telling you what to do on your private property? Do you feel it's a hiker's responsibility to inquire from every property owner where you happen to be hiking that day? Hey, do you have traps on your property this fall? Us hikers, and there are 69% of us in the state, according to your Vermont Fish and Wildlife Department Responsible Management Survey, there's 69 homeowners who like to hike in the state, and we are all at risk for five months out of the year. Yeah, that's a long time, so I would just like to, you know, put it on the record that I think this is something that really needs to be considered. It does not address the suffering and distress of trapped animals, but it does help to maybe keep our pets a little bit safer, and children, and us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
My name is John Lott, trapper. I want to raise this lady trapper dog.
Now, dress me. All right, thanks. Whoops, did you take the lights off? I just don't want to go back. We need to record your comments, so.
I had a friend that I, oh, that I had a boy on my hand, and it's supposed, I had trouble with his dog, and he's, both hounds have dogs, we show, but yet they eat my dog, underdog, bear, or two, I had your dog beat my trap before, hey, what do you want on my hands? Of course, of course, I can use it. So Jen, if you're ready, if your dog can leash, let him just go here.
Thank you. Any, anyone want to share anything else? For us, we mentioned here, yes.
I, I just want to share one thing that I think is overlooked in a lot of the conversations about this, that when, there, there, there was a good article about this, it was a Roman Anti-Trafficking Organization, that many, many traps that are, that do unfortunately trap pets are traps that are set illegally. I'm not sure the circumstances of were a particular pet, if it was trapped illegally, I personally trapped, and I didn't know all the people that I know that trapped, follow the rules to the T, and if they did, I don't believe that your dog would have been five feet of tree or underwater to, to enter a hound there. I just think that's worth thinking of, just in this whole conversation, that these best management practices very often will be pets on the arm, including the limited traps where they could, like, go foot hold. There's a very good article, there's, without, I forget, you know, what it's put out, I think, a trap collection. It's well documented, and I, and I honestly wish that that was more publicly known, whether, because there are articles put out where they're like, a, a dog ended up in a body gripping trap, and people don't, they neglect to say whether it was set illegally or not, that cast traps like that, like, and it doesn't tell the whole truth.
Thank you, sir. Yep, go ahead, Eric. Your name and the town you come from, please.
What?
Name and town, residence.
So if everyone said the leash law, and everybody says that because it's so ironic that there's a leash law for pets, so with hounding, there's no leash law, it's just the, the irony of that is, second part I want to make it is about the posted landing. The penalties you put in place. The penalties you've put in place for hounds going on posted land is completely inadequate. I want that on record, say, you should lose your posted license for life if your dog goes under posted land. If you're in control, it shouldn't be a problem, right, everybody? You're in control. So why would you let that happen?
Thank you. I believe you made that comment in groups. I believe we wrote that one. Thank you. Okay, great, awesome. Anyone else that have an opportunity to speak tonight? Any questions?
Hi, Karen.
Go ahead, yes.
Hi, Sarah from Miranda. I hope you know where you are. Here is Fort Loudland. I work with the Department. They're a national science-based nonprofit that uses best scientific science to score all of their work. I wish the Fish and Wildlife Department, the Department of Vermont, would say, most of these recommendations are not informed by the current science about best management and practices. Our understanding from studies that we're looking at is that trapping will never be made humane. So we could go beyond what we're doing here and say that these statements will never make trapping more humane. I also just wanted to make a comment about the handling issue, which is that radio collars are never going to control dogs. Your own Fish and Wildlife Director, who testified about this in March, basically mentioned that the radio collars don't work after one mile of range, and that an actual over eight times the collars don't work. So my question is, how do these rules, they propose, actually protect landowners' rights and the rights of homeowners who are farmers, don't fly hunting on their property? Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Anyone else have had a chance to, have not spoken already? Let you speak again, Brian, if nobody else wants to speak. I'm just trying to be fair and everybody's time here tonight. Folks, the travel is on business here. So if no one else wants to speak, you're welcome to speak again, Brian.
Just really quick, I think I have a comment, but it's, my interpretation is, it was a recommendation, trapping has to be more, a letter that one of my mentors wrote, but also there's studies in this room that trap dogs in cats. So to say that, you know, good travelers don't trap domestic animals, if you set a baby trap in the woods and you leave for a day, you are going to trap dogs in cats. So to say that doesn't count and is he is indigenous. So trappers in this room, you know, you trap dogs in cats. So I just want to have more of that kind of honest discussion. And no tracker wants to trap a dog or a cat. Not saying that. I am having now that it requires reporting when it happens. But to say that good travelers don't trap dogs and cats is just anecdotal. But I have referred to that statement. Hello?
Thank you. Okay, folks, on behalf of the department and the board, thank you so much for coming here tonight. I would tell you, we wouldn't be here tonight if we didn't do strongly that we're working towards a legislative mandate to make trapping more humane and safe in the state of Vermont. We work hard on that. That's our goal. And we look forward that we get there to do that. So behalf of the board, safe travels. Thank you.